Thank you.
Yep.
All right, it is 6:30. We'll call the meeting to order, please, with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. Roll call, Mr. Lombard?
On.
Yes.
Modi.
Yep.
Saxor.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
All right, with that, if there are no changes, I would entertain a motion to approve the agendas presented, please. There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. No conflict of interest disclosure or waiver requests this evening takes us to the approval or our board minutes from our regular meetings on September 11th and September 25th. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So moved.
Second. There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Community input. I don't think we had anyone signed up tonight. Is there anyone from the community in the audience? All right. Seeing none, we will move on. Well, I... Financial items. Bills and claims, Mr. Lombard.
Okay. As always, I'll entertain any questions, specific questions you guys had. I had a couple bills noted in the listing for tonight's board meeting on page two. $241,350 to Architecture Incorporated for architectural fees for the East Side Elementary. That's in lieu of all the things that have been happening with the East Side Elementary and the delayed timeframe of that. We still need to... They're just over half done with the drawing, the whole process. So that's where we're at on their billing. I had a couple other ones noted, I know. Page eight, High Point Tech... High Point Networks. The $450,000 is for District Chromebooks, Majority at Beavis Elementary School, and then various schools, various Chromebooks throughout the schools. And then we also purchased $75,000 of new replacement network switches, Cisco Network switches. Page 12, Midstates Audio. We updated our high school activity center sound system for $64,453. One half of that will be reimbursed by the Brandon Valley Booster Club. Page 13, at the top, Paul Fick Homes. The street fees for the South Sparta Land, the 20 acres that we currently own down there. I refer to it as the crawl property. They put in the road, Sparta continued the Sparta Street all the way down there, so we have to pay our share of that. Road. And then at the bottom, Reading Bus Line, about just over $20,000 of Turner Bus Service. Our total budget for the year of Turner Bus Service is $90,000. Total bills and claims of $1,414,000. $3,673 of advanced payments broken down in the next page. $82,732 of pay vouchers. Food service bills, $205,148.81.
Any more... Any questions on the bills and claims from Mr. Lombard in the assembly?
With you talking about the Paul Fick, the 102, you said "our share." What is a typical "our share" of putting in roads and...
We pay for the half that's un... Butted up to our property. Whoever on the other side of it pays the other half of the road.
Thanks.
I was talking to Jared. I think that property is more of a rectangle than a square, so it's a little less than what one would think if it's a square piece of property down there for the road.
If there are no other questions on the bills and claims, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please. There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Financial report, Mr. Lombard.
The cash report for the month of September, $10.4 million coming into the month. We had $2.8 million of receipts and $4.8 million of disbursements. $8.4 million at the end of September, of which $7,224,000 was in the general fund, $815,000 in the special education fund, $376,000 in the bond redemption fund, and $12,500 in the enterprise fund. Remembering that we receive our tax draws in May and November, so we're bumping up to a lower point in our cash flow situation. $2.8 million itemized on the next two pages. Investment report shows $2,080,000 of investments at South Dakota Fit and First National Bank. Payroll report for the month of September was $2,600,589. And then our first financial statements of the year, quarter of the year done through September. Revenue are in the first page there, the revenue reports. As always, those are skewed early on in the year in a school district, just based on how revenue comes in. Expenditure reports are more valuable to you. General fund at the end of September showed 24.58%. Expended year-to-date versus 25.25% last year. So seven tenths of a percent lower than where we were last year. Capital outlay fund showed just under 33% of the budget expended for this fiscal year. Special aid at 21.5% expended versus 20% last year, so a little higher than last year. Bond redemption fund was right at 32% versus 31% last year. Food service department showed accrued loss at the end of September of just under $100,096,000. Remembering that the food service department has a planned budgeted loss of $185,000 for the fiscal year '24. $240,948 in the trust and agency funds. That's it.
Are you seeing any inflation like last year? Or are prices kind of stabilized?
I think so.
Good. Thank you.
I hope so.
Any other questions on the financial reports tonight? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Lombard. General business. First, we have administration reports. Administrative Center Superintendent Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A few items to update the board on here this evening. Here in the near future, we will have the release of the public report cards. So ultimately, SPI scores that are assigned to our districts and the respective public information in terms of student achievement will be coming out here this month. So be on the lookout for that. We are in the process of revising, revisiting, and evaluating our strategic plan over the course of this year. There'll be a number of opportunities. In addition to our focus groups, we'll have some open house opportunities and also conduct a survey. Free and reduced meal application. This is... We're nearing the time where it's critically important that folks complete the free and reduced application if they believe as though they're eligible. So it's important for folks to do that. We're running into the time of the year where if individuals have not re-upped that respective application and become on paid status, then once they... If they incur a debt within the meal program, then they're informed of their... The amount of money they have in their balance and that an alternative meal is provided to students. So that's why it's critically important for folks, if they believe they may be eligible, to complete that. And we have communicated that in a wide variety of ways. So one more way of reminding folks, if you believe you're eligible, get your free and reduced application completed. Academic calendar items. Just want to note, no school today. We had in-service. There's no school on November 10th for Veterans Day. There is no school November 22nd through the 24th. That is our Thanksgiving break. We will have a two-hour early dismissal on the 21st of December, and then we are on winter break from December 22nd until January 2nd. So look forward to those respective calendar dates. Enrollment. As of Friday, the last Friday in September, we are 38 students up from our last fall count date. I would note that these numbers are not the actual final. The actual finals get finalized here over the course of the next couple of weeks. And then ultimately, the count number is established in the middle of October, I think October 15th. That allows the state to clean up any overlap reports or any of those respective things that we may have going on. But again, I would imagine that we will land somewhere in that 35 to 38 range. So just so you know, that is right now where we are in terms of our fall enrollment. We will have that finalized for you in terms of what the exact count date number is here next month. East Side Elementary School, as previously communicated, the opening is delayed for one year, and that's the result of additional work necessary to value engineer out and plan out the sewer line respectively. Fred Assam Elementary, exciting news. We received the announcement that Fred Assam Elementary has won the National Blue Ribbon School Award. We will be having a special celebration at Fred Assam Elementary on Friday, October 20th at 1:00 p.m. Certainly would like to congratulate the student staff, families, and Principal Foster for that incredible recognition. It's truly the highest award that a public school can receive, so certainly something to be very, very proud of. We have a few different dignitaries lined up to come celebrate with us, and I am certain that Principal Foster and Fred Assam are going to be doing all sorts of blue things in terms of their celebration. I heard something about blueberry pancakes or waffles or... Oh, just stop talking. Just stop talking. Okay, very good. Well, anyway, moral of the story is it's a tremendous... It's a tremendous award, and we certainly want to extend our congratulations to them and invite you all, if you happen to be available, to join us on October 20th. I would certainly field any questions that you have.
All right. Thank you very much, Superintendent Larson. Mr. Lombard, anything additional? Okay. High school, Mr. Schluckaway? Let's see. Middle school, Mr. Rothenberger? Nope. Intermediate school, Mr. Skivstad or Mr. Pearson?
I'll say a couple things haven't been up here, I don't think, this year, so I figure it's time I give you an update on if you think so. First off, I know Mr. Lombard mentioned the IT stuff and the computers and whatnot, Chromebooks and things like that. Rollout, barring our delay in shipment, our rollout went very, very smoothly. We ended up doing a lot of stuff on our end, based off of the devices getting late. So I have to credit the IT team. We spent a whole day, 900 computers, unboxing them, getting them tagged, getting them ready, so we could roll them out on a Friday. Did it on a Wednesday. So has gone very, very smoothly, but without the IT guys doing that stuff and their team, it wouldn't have been possible. So it's going well. Thank you for your support on that. It's really helping our students and our staff to be able to get things done that they want to get done. Conferences went well, had a first. We went into a severe weather drill, or actual not drill, I guess, with the tornado sirens going off that night. So the parents were all great and never thought we'd have to use it there. But conferences went very well. Love our patrons' participation. Haven't got our final numbers, but I think we're in the 80s as far as percent of attendance, which is good for us. And in the spring, we always try to tap into those 90s with the student showcase that we do, so that was good. And then had the opportunity today with in-service to dig into some data and different things like that, and our staff was well receptive of it and got a lot of good things going. And hopefully it can get us going in the right direction and continue to grow as we do. So thank you for your support, and there's a few things from us. Any questions?
Thank you. Elementary's, anyone?
Okay. So yes, we are a National Blue Ribbon School. It was probably the hardest secret I've ever had to keep. I've known since January that we were nominated. And it's probably the most exciting honor that I've had in 41 years of education. So although we will still re-bleed red and black, we are going to do it in a blue way on October 20th. We're starting the day off with Rainy Day Coffee Truck. They'll be out at Fred Assam for the staff for some tasty drinks in the morning. We're going to hold class until about 11:30, and then I'm going to announce that its classes are canceled for the rest of the day. And they're all going to get their blue t-shirts. PTA is currently having blue t-shirts with the emblem printed on there and with Fred Assam Elementary on there. So the kids will all get those. And then they're going to go into a blue lunch. So we're having nachos with blue tortilla chips and blue applesauce and lots of fun. And of course, we've got Dakota Snow coming, and the kids are going to have a blue raspberry snow cones. So it should be a fun lunch hour for them. Then we're going to roll right into the high school drum line is coming out to perform from 12:30 to 1:00 to get our kids all ramped up, you know? So that'll be fun, and we're going to try and get all the kids in there, take a picture with all of us in our blue. The celebration begins at 1:00 with... Fifth graders will be coming back over since they are part of the scores from last spring. So fifth graders will be arriving about 12:45 and get their pictures in, and then we'll start the celebration at 1:00. We are having Student Council present that or put on that little celebration. They'll have some speaking parts and introductions to... I think we have five people from the Department of Ed coming that I know of right now. Senator John Thune is expected to come, which we are really excited, and that's thanks to Brady Olson for lining that up to us, for us, and of course, Dr. Larson. So with them each having a little tidbit of time to speak, we hope to wind that up about 1:30 because then we're rolling in with Master Illusionist Keith West and the Illusioners. They even come in blue suits. So that's about a 45-minute program. All the while, we are going to have lots of things blue throughout the school that day. Blue tablecloths, blue napkins. It's just going to be blue everywhere. But if you are able to come, we would appreciate it. We would welcome you. Thank you. But do know that this is quite an honor, and we're going to do it upright at Fred Assam Elementary. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No. All right. Mr. Henshaw, anything tonight? Mr. Farquhar, anything?
We are kind of culminating a lot of activities right now, but last week on Friday, Abby Borsma of the girls' tennis team finished as the first state champion in Brandon Valley history in girls' tennis. So just wanted to reach out. She was Flight Five and was the girls' state champion. So we've got a lot of other things going on, but right now, that was the highlight that's come through with the activities for now. So thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations to her. No board policy tonight, so that takes us to our next item, general business, the enrollment budget plan overview. This is presentation only, no action.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just note for you, the board, the following information and plan has been disseminated to the parents, families, and staff of the Brandon Valley School District. That was sent to them... Well, it was sent to Valley Springs families on Wednesday and then was disseminated to the district on Friday. So this is information that your respective patrons have received. So we have been talking about the enrollment situation and our budget in terms of our budget being built around 165 new students and that we have approximately 35 new students. So that's not new information. That's something that we've been talking about since August. But a relatively new piece of this situation is the delay in our East Side Elementary construction timeline. Again, we've been through the reasoning and rationale on why that's ultimately necessary as our city is faced with the extremely challenging circumstance of dealing with projects that are greatly over budget. So they're working through their prioritization processes as well as their value engineering processes, and they need a little bit more time, and that equates to us needing to delay that construction project by ultimately one year. So those are the two big-ticket items that we're really going to talk about with obviously the enrollment and the budget being the primary driver and the other just being a factor that we have to work with and through. So in terms of the budget enrollment and situation, what we have is we have 165 students within our budget. That's what your budget was built upon. What we have is 35 actual students. I would tell you that that number could be 36, 37, or 38, or it could be 34. Again, that number is not finalized here until the middle of October. But at the end of the day, you'll be right in that 35 additional student number. So ultimately, we have 130 fewer students than budgeted. When you take a look at the breakdown on that, it equates to just over $900,000. It is most certainly relevant to note that we did have a planned deficit of $493,000. That is a responsible fiscal deficit that we utilize to maintain our fund balance in and around that 15% range. So it's a mechanism that we do utilize. It is a responsible planned deficit. That in connection with our unanticipated enrollment shortage ultimately leaves us with $1,400,000 and change in terms of deficit for this respective school year. Relevant to note that the plan that we are outlining does not eliminate the planned deficit, but ultimately just gets us very close to eliminating that $900,000 deficit respectively. In terms of the updated East Side Elementary construction timeline, ultimately, we are... The opening is delayed by one year. We will look to bid that project in the fall of 2024. I would tell you, if the timing works and we're able to bid that prior to October, November, we will do that, ultimately giving ourselves additional time for the construction of that facility. But again, that'll be a little bit dependent upon when exactly we know that contract is awarded for the East Side Elementary or for the East Side Sewer Line. Construction will begin. It will remain in progress until the summer of 2026, and ultimately, the East Side Elementary will be set to open in the fall of 2026. Okay, so in terms of the budget enrollment plan, ultimately, what we have done is worked through a process to reduce the FY '24 budget or this school year's budget. And we are doing that in a variety of ways, but ultimately, it is $572,000 total dollars in the general fund that we are looking to reduce. The two major contributors to that respective number are vacant positions being left unfilled and/or the delaying of hiring for a couple of positions. So there are four specific positions that we will leave, remain unfilled for this school year, two custodial and two education assistant positions. And then we've done some delayed hiring on a couple of other positions within departments that we'll need to hire them for the successful completion of the school year, specifically through the winter months. So they will be hired, but they're ultimately delayed, which is a cost savings. In addition to that, we are working through our process with our Brandon Valley Education Association to eliminate two extra paid days from the teacher contract. Most certainly is relevant to note that that will have no impact to the student calendar. So the student contact calendar does not change. Very appreciative of the association and the communications that we've had with them throughout the entirety of the process. I would tell you that our conversations with association leadership really began back in August when it became clear and evident that this was potentially going to be an issue. So we wanted to communicate with them in a very timely manner and transparent manner, and we've had those meetings with leadership and certainly appreciate their willingness to come to the table and have the conversation and look at long-term impacts, et cetera. So general fund reductions totaling in the amount of $572,000. In addition to those two big-ticket items, which again make up for more than $400,000-some-odd-thousand dollars of that number, some other items are reducing nonessential travel and out-of-district PD, some supply and material reduction, concerted effort on reducing costs associated with substitute teaching, utilization of vendors for maintenance repairs, et cetera. And then the one that is a little bit unique and was ultimately came about through the collaborative conversation with a department head was a voluntary unpaid day for 12-month classified staff. So not required, but they ultimately can participate if they would elect to and it not. It would be an unpaid day as opposed to utilization of a leave day. In terms of capital outlay fund reductions, we've identified $300,000, $301,000 in capital outlay fund expenditure reductions. Very relevant to note, yes, the general fund and capital outlay fund are two separate funds for two separate things. However, in the state of South Dakota, they do allow for capital outlay flexibility to support the general fund. So that's where it gets a little bit winding, for lack of a better phrase. So there's relevancy to this $300,000 as well. Ultimately, what that is, is that is us capturing and not utilizing the remaining balance from some capital projects. So the high school addition change order, change orders came in really well, and we have $130,000 remaining there. In addition to that, some numbers came in really well for the caulking of the PAC wall joints, high school commons roof, some of those types of things. So ultimately, the numbers came in good, didn't expend the total budget amount. We're going to recapture that and then not utilize that moving forward. And then in addition to that, there's a number of things, smaller projects, for example, like a light, an additional light in the middle school bus loop, an undercarriage wash unit and entry door, some of those types of things. So that's ultimately where those $300,000 come from. In totality, we have outlined $873,000 for total general fund and capital outlay fund reductions. I would tell you that I believe that, in addition to us just having top-of-mind budget throughout all of our thought processes and approvals over the course of this school year, that will be right there in terms of respective reductions. Another aspect of our budget and enrollment plan is the closure of Valley Springs Elementary effective at the end of the '23-'24 school year. This is necessitated not only by your budget and your enrollment, but ultimately, you are in a district that will still continue to experience growth in respective areas and/or buildings. And right now, you are staffed out for 5,165 kids. So this next spring, when it comes time to staff, you will have buildings that have needs. And ultimately, you will not have the available resources to provide those needs because those resources are already distributed throughout the district as you're basically built out to already manage and teach 5,165 kids, approximately. So ultimately, what you're looking to do is you are looking to utilize those respective staff members or their FTE, per se, to accommodate growing sections or student populations in respective buildings. So for example, the middle school may have needs next year for additional staffing. If that's the case, we could have Valley Springs Elementary staff go there. Or what we could do is certainly have Valley Springs Elementary staff would take on a different elementary position that happens to be open, and then you hire for that middle school position. for that middle school position, but it's not additional monies because that position is already existing within your respective budget. So, very important to know that we will utilize all staff throughout the district to meet our respective needs. Whoops. Operational expenses, ultimately, the closure of Valley Valley Springs Elementary will have will have will have us see a reduction in operational expenses. At this point in time, we would tentatively estimate about $200,000 in operational cost reductions. I would note, you'll have over a half a million dollars in staffing to redistribute throughout the district. So, half million dollars in staffing redistributed, reduction of operational expenses by about $200,000. All right. In addition to the closure of Valley Springs at the end of this effective school year, just want to outline from a real macro level what that looks like. And ultimately, what occurs is the Valley Springs Elementary boundary is simply attached to the Brandon Elementary boundary for those two respective school years. So, the Brandon Elementary attendance zone would be its current zone, plus the Valley Springs Elementary attendance zone, which right now, they have 65 students at Valley. So, those 65 students at Valley would ultimately come over to Brandon Elementary. Brandon Elementary right now is 650-ish K-12. So, those those 65 kiddos come over and join Brandon Elementary. The capacity of that building, just over 900, if my memory serves me correctly. So, ultimately, space to serve. So, those Valley Springs students attend Brandon Elementary for the 24, 25, and 25, 26 school terms, and then ultimately would become part of the new East Side Elementary attendance zone. Once the once the East Side Elementary is open, just just wanted to note that Robert Bennett's Elementary will be significantly impacted in terms of its boundary. So, the eastern portion of Robert Bennett's Elementary boundary will ultimately be attached to what is the current Valley Springs Elementary boundary to pick up that east side, the east side attendance center. So, then the Valley Springs Elementary students begin attending East Side Elementary effective for the 26-27 school term. There are just a couple of micro-level items I would like to address in terms of this one. There have been, I received a question regarding a child's first grader. So, if you have a first grader at Valley Springs Elementary this year, and they go to BE for second and third grade, and then they have to go someplace different for fourth grade, that seems like a lot of transitions. And what I would tell you is I have the same intention and plan in terms of that transition that we did when we opened Inspiration Elementary and Fred Assam Elementary, third graders were impacted. Ultimately, your third graders are able to stay for their fourth grade year and then not having to transition. There is the caveat of we do not provide transportation to in-district open enrolled students. So, that is a caveat that families have to be able to get them to and from said said attendance center. But they would be able to stay for their fourth grade year so they didn't have that respective transition. The other question that I I fielded was if I had an estimated idea on on the bus route time. I would tell you that we we generally shoot for no more than an hour. I think at this exact moment in time, our afternoon buses are all clear by about 4:25 or so. So, at the end of the day, I would anticipate it being very similar. Bus time will range from 30 to 60 minutes in terms of anticipated bus route schedule. And then the other question surrounded sizes in terms of these families are used to experiencing smaller class sizes, like what will what will they experience at Brandon Elementary? And I would tell you, they will experience the normal range of class sizes that we have within the Brandon Valley School District, ranging anywhere from, I suspect, 23, 24 to that 30 number somewhere in that respective in that respective range. So, just typical Brandon Valley Elementary class sizes. The other component of the budget and enrollment plan for FY25, so this isn't for this year's budget, but it is for next year's budget, is we are going to utilize our Apple MacBooks for one additional year. Earlier this fall, had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Schleckaway and communicate in terms of the devices, how they're going, how it's working, quality, et cetera. We use a four-year lease to own. So, that's that's Mr. Lundberg might be able to tell me the fancy name of it. It's like Apple's financing plan. It was 0%, I don't know if it still is or if it's 1%, but it's a very, very low percentage. And then ultimately, they allow you to lease to own those respective devices. So, it's a $400,000 expense for all four years of the lease. But in my communication with Mr. Schleckaway, we feel very confident that we'll have no problems with the utilization of those devices for one additional year, which ultimately frees up that $400,000 number for for one year. Obviously, it will come back once we once we go back into a new program. But for next year, it is a reduction. So, I just wanted to outline outline some communications that we've had and ultimately answer any questions that you may respectively have. Began, again, BVA communications. I think that it is it is imperative and also very valuable to just share that they were they were one of the very first stops and the very first conversations that we had, and the partnership is is valued. And they've been they've been engaged and involved throughout the entirety of the process this fall. You've received enrollment updates on August 14th and 28th, so I'm certain that you learning about this enrollment situation is not new. On September 25th, at that Board of Education meeting, I just commented that we were we were working on a plan and would ultimately be bringing it to you, outlining the big numbers, communicated to our patrons via the Supes On column, following that Board of Education meeting. Very important to communicate directly with our Valley Springs staff as they were they were the individuals that were directly directly involved and went out and met with them in person on October 4th, and then later that evening disseminated a parent email video to all of our Valley Springs Elementary parents. Apologize if it feels unpersonal to communicate in such a way, but it is ultimately the very best way for me to make certain that communications are clear, timely, transparent, and not lost in translation. So, that's that was ultimately the the reason for that communication to our parents. On October 6th, did send a superintendent's update to the Brandon Valley School District and provided our entire district with that respective information. And then, as previously communicated, wanted to provide a plan overview here at this respective board meeting. We'll field any questions that you have. And then I want to give you a little look ahead in terms of what's to come. At our October 23rd Board of Education meeting, I would look to have our enrollment budget planned approved. There are three additional action items that have to happen within that action item. The first, pending successful approval by both parties, we will work to ratify the 23-24 master agreement amendment. And then, following that, we will also approve the updated academic calendar for this respective school year. Again, no change to the no change to the student contact calendar. And then the last item would be ultimately be I will be bringing forward through my recommendation, a resolution closing Valley Springs Elementary effective at the end of the 23-24 school year. So, with that, Madam Chair, that would be the overview of our enrollment and budget plan, and again, would certainly be willing to entertain any questions that you may have.
I've got one. No matter what the future enrollment is actually, we will continue pursuing East Side Elementary, correct?
Yes, absolutely. And the reality of the situation is in two years, you'll have to have East Side Elementary open to alleviate the pressure off of RBE. And at that point in time, Brandon Elementary will be needing some pressure to be relieved as well. So, yes, we will be building an East Side Elementary.
I just wanted to make sure that no matter what.
And for our Brandon Vision 2040, we are still looking at utilizing the property in Valley, just in a different way.
Yep, absolutely. Madam Chair, certainly relevant to note, BV Vision 2040 does outline our our driving passion to remain one high school in the Brandon Valley School District. And I would maybe use the term in perpetuity, even though that might not be a reality. I know that it's a reality that we can we can look at for the next three decades or more. But ultimately, what it outlines is that that the Valley Springs location, when we reach our trigger point, our enrollment trigger point at Brandon Valley High School, then that will be utilized to create a special off-site high school academy. Career and Technical Education Academy has certainly been one of the ideas that has boiled up to the top. STEM academies have been part of the conversation. I've heard a fine arts academy. So, there's going to be opportunity for some tremendous some tremendous things in the future. I would anticipate that being approximately 10 years away.
All right. Any other questions for Superintendent Larson? All right, we will go on to personnel. I would entertain a motion to approve items 1 through 11, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Items 12 and 13 are for information only. Under Communication Central Office, there are some building permit applications there for your review if you would like to look at those. And with that, that takes us to our board reports. Does anyone have a formal report they would like to share tonight?
Well, the Transportation Department met last Thursday afternoon. And just an update of what went on, the administrative assistant position was filled in July. And I tell you the the bus passes went over with a hit. I mean, at the meeting, I think I wrote down the number of only only 42 kids did not get a bus pass that forgot, didn't meet the deadline. So, that's awesome when you think of how many kids we have here. And the routing and everything has gone very smooth, and we're going to keep with the budget and everything. We're going to keep with the same bussing software that we've had in the past. We also have, let's see, we've got two propane buses that we have received through the Esser Funds, and then we put two old diesels to rest. And then we've we bought two full-size SUVs, and one maintenance truck has been ordered. And we lost one vehicle due to a traffic misfortune earlier in the or earlier in the fall. As far as everything else for next year, those of you that can see it on the screen, bus passes will be open from July 1st through the 26th of '24. And then postcards will be sent out the 8th or August 15th. And if you miss getting signed up for transportation, you will not be able to drive the bus till September 30th. Long trains plan, we talked about different things. But one thing we we definitely said, we are not going to raise bus passes for the next coming year, just because we want to make sure everything with everything, the changes of moving Valley over here and everything, we want to make sure we didn't hike the prices up. So, in a nutshell, that basically wrapped up the transportation meeting.
Was the accident a total loss?
Couple other things. Obviously, the the kids that missed this year, those 40-some kids, those have since then been able to join the buses, the routes. So, they are riding buses now. The other main thing that we talked about was the no bussing zones. We are under discussion on those areas and discussing what's the best for our boundaries and what's going to be best for those kids walking or riding. So, moving forward, those will be decided. Thank you.
All right. For alternative ed, we have a new partner for some of our, I can't remember the name of the the program, but it's the older kids with the mentoring and the life skills. Sanford has also come on board. So, we have kids at Avera, kids at we'll have kids at Sanford now. So, it's kind of exciting. We just seem to keep growing down there, and and that's a good thing. So, we I think T-12's done a really excellent job. And then we also had a nutrition meeting today. Were you going to do that one?
You were there, so.
Oh, it was very short. But I think Dr. Larson alluded to the free and reduced, getting the applications. And I think that Director Cruz said that maybe that date was today or had passed. So, people still, if you need free and reduced lunch, just she said, just get it in. They talked about the different programs that they taught in the schools this year, and they have 10 different curriculums. And they said if there's any other ideas for any other curriculums that you guys would like, to let them know. They all went wonderfully. Allison and Andrea really like getting into the school, so it was a big hit. And it was just fun to hear about everything they did. So, that's all I anybody have anything else from another any other board meetings? All right. There are a couple of travel reports there for your review. Otherwise, that takes us to the end of our agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for coming.